Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Good evening, we're going to open the Georgetown Planning Board September 26, 2018. Present today is Joanne Lout and Bob Watts and myself as Tilly Evangelista. May I have a motion for the minutes of September 13?
I move to approve the draft meeting minutes for 12 Sep- September 8, 2018, Planning Board meeting as written pending discussion. I'm moving for that even though I'm not eligible to vote on it.
My second.
My second.
Discussion? Do you have any discussion?
No.
Actually, the question I did have was what's the next step for Parrish Road?
The next step is...
They have to answer some questions.
Yes, yeah, so they're coming back at our next meeting.
And as far as we know, they're gonna be coming back with the same plan that they...
Yes, yeah. They asked for a continuance because we did not have a full board.
Yep.
Okay, can we have a vote please?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And we have two, we have one voucher. Make a motion to pay that bill.
I move to approve the voucher for legal ads for public hearing for Healthy Farms Recreational Marijuana placed on August 3 and August 10, 2018 for $133.60.
My second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
No.
Ready to vote?
Aye.
Aye.
We have two correspondents, one from the town of Newberry and one from Bofford. We have two, we have one public hearing scheduled for Healthy Farms. Would you like to proceed?
No one is here for Healthy Farms.
Isn't that, you look like, I'm sorry! Where are you, what are you for?
Well, we're actually from Raleigh, town of Raleigh. We're here for the Healthy Farms.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
You know, may Ms. Jim...
Go ahead.
You know, with three members present as opposed to a full board of five, they chose to ask for a continuance for this evening. So, what the board will most likely vote on is a continuance till the October 10 meeting. That's our next scheduled meeting.
Okay, should I have a motion?
Sorry about that, but...
For a continuance?
Madam Chairman, I move that we continue the hearing for Healthy Farms special permit for the purpose of Tier IV indoor cultivator marijuana establishment and retail, to retail marijuana establishment to include medical marijuana and adult use marijuana sales and manufacturing, as a manufacturing marijuana establishment, to be continued until 10 October at 7:10.
Okay, thank you.
My second.
We have a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
And again, we'll probably want to hold on to these or should I just put it back in the pack?
Yeah, you can hold on to them.
Hold on to them.
Yeah, yeah. It'll be the same thing next week.
Okay. We, the next thing on our agenda is 198 East Main Street, OSRD, for a proposed turnaround modification. Mr. Oden.
Madam Chairman, if I could, we don't have an overhead tonight because the system's going through an update, so...
Oh, what is it?
It's still updating. You need easel?
My son stole mine.
Oh, I can just...
You got the chair.
Something like that.
Did they...
Take everything from dads.
I know, I certainly was.
What I've done, I have met with the fire chief out at the site and if, just to go back a little, when we came in for approval, we agreed to put a temporary, an emergency access easement from where the driveway and parking area ends over to the town's land that abuts the parking rec. And with the original plan, we had a turnaround up here coming down the road. But in talking to him and thinking about it, I thought it would be better to put it here because it's closer to this access. And it also has a few other advantages. One, with the turnaround here, I'd be taking down four or five trees and disturbing this area and you're gonna come down here and see this straightaway. So what I've done is we've revised this, this, I'll try to move this a bit closer. Existing paving, not paving, but gravel is about here, so most of this area is disturbed anyway. And this area over here is gonna get disturbed because that's where my septic system's going. So what I came up with was to loop this in here and move this back here and I have a hundred-foot radius, which is what he requested. I think yours is less. For his, yeah, ladder truck, it's like 40 feet long and he wanted a longer, a bigger radius. So the idea would be they could come down here, back in this strip, back around and come back out. And for that, because I was gonna have to do something here, I'll gravel this easement all the way to the town line.
That would be great.
And then when town decides to do something, there's some land that has to, there's a field over here for the Boy Scouts. So the town would have to do something on the other side of the stone wall for about 30 feet if they wanted to get in there. I mean, it's unlikely anyone's ever gonna use it, but if there was an accident out on East Main Street at the front of the church and you couldn't get in there, I don't think there's any other way in.
Do you know if that's the church's property?
No, it doesn't go to the church's property. There's a, I can bring this up for a second.
I, yeah, oh, thank you.
The churches, see this line here? That's the town, this is the church.
Oh, I see.
So the town bought a chunk of land way out there from the church for the parking rec. So it goes on to town land, they have to curve a little to miss the offuson, but unless you get some cooperation from the conservation, it's right on the edge of it. So it's not like it's filling the wetland or any of that thing.
So basically, it's because of your septic that you wanted to change it?
No.
No?
No, it's because it made more sense to have it closer to where the access is. So that if they were in here, they didn't have to back where the hell, excuse me, on TV, where the heck up here and then do that, they just didn't come out, take a couple swings and come back out again.
Okay.
Instead of, that's about 400 feet. So it's just a little, and it also saves me from disturbing that, which, that's basically the tree line of the property. And the property next to me, the randos.
What would, what would it take and how much would it cost for us to extend it on the town land?
I don't know. I, to get to where there's no trees, I'm not sure, I could ask my contractor, but...
Yeah, that would be a help to know.
Yeah.
Because I don't want it to be done.
Yeah, well, I'm not sure if the chief talked to Peter or not, but I suggested to him he did. Because Peter could get in there and do something quickly.
Right, right.
Yeah, because if, I mean, the Boy Scouts are in there, they need to get an ambulance up there and stuff.
Yeah, it's unlikely because you got access in front of the church, but I mean, we actually proposed it. It wasn't something the board asked for.
Yeah.
But I lived there and if there was a crash, it, there's all kinds of crashes on East Main Street, at the church and somebody was hurt, that's the only access to the parking rec land currently.
Yeah.
So...
But that is the parking rec land that...
Yeah, this is. Right, I'm not sure where line goes after that, I think it goes up here.
Right, but that's where they're building the ballpark and the dog park.
That stuff way out back.
But it's that, it's that same property.
Same property. So they could go across the field...
Only part of it's built.
Yeah. And hit this driveway over there. It's a long ride, but it's also good for the Boy Scouts because they hang out right in here.
Yeah, that would be great.
So that was a minor modification we were requesting.
Thank you.
Thank you. We did meet at the site a long time ago in May with John and Larry and...
Who's the house coming along?
Finally's being framed.
It's hard to find contractors.
Well, I waited for this guy on purpose. I do engineering on houses and I know good framers and not so good framers.
Any other questions from the board?
Nope.
You go outside aside. John, do you have a comment?
The only comment I do have is the fire chief, we do have his recommendation. He had no problem with it and that was included with the staff report. And there is a draft motion to the effect of providing for this modification. That's at the bottom of the first page. It's a little bit lengthier than I know people dislike, but sometimes you just can't avoid it.
Okay.
And I know you like that.
That's short compared to some of those ones.
Do we have that though?
That's here.
Yeah.
Do you have it?
First page.
No, this is the A and R. I don't think I ever had it.
Yeah.
I have the vouchers, the correspondence, and the minutes.
I did see it.
So you wanna read it? I'll read it if you want.
You read it.
Just wait and get some practice. Go for it, Joanne.
The draft motion I'm reading.
Right, right.
"I move to approve the proposed turnaround location for the 198 East Main Street two-lot OSRD plan as shown on the plan entitled 'Proposed Modification of Turnaround Location', Sheet 1 of 1, which shall supersede the turnaround location and design as shown on the original approved plan of record entitled 'OSRD Definitive Subdivision Plan of 199 East Main Street in Georgetown, Mass.'"
Okay. Thank you. Second?
Second.
Ready to vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Sure.
Getting ahold of you, we should be starting something out. Try to get water in before Christmas. Thank you.
Yeah, you might want to talk to Larry directly.
Yeah.
Just in case.
We have our selectmen in the audience?
Whatever, fine selectmen.
Yeah. Gary, do you want anything to present to us?
No, I've got another meeting at 7:30, so I thought I'd come up and...
Rest.
Keep us company, thank you.
All right, thank you, Gary.
He is a politician, isn't he?
I guess. Okay, next, next is our A and R for 14 Spofford Avenue and 7 Pine Grove Avenue.
Here's a handbook of the Slade Use, explaining this thing.
Oh, yeah.
But if you want to do it, obviously.
Okay, I'll get rid of that, thank you.
I just want to...
Okay. Okay. You're up. Come on up.
Come on up.
Name and address for the record.
Zachary Dupow, and I'm here to represent my father of 14 Spofford Ave. And let's see here, so they, I know, excuse my lack of knowledge on the matter here, but my father, we had a death in the family and my father and stepmother are kind of closing the loops on a couple of things here, but...
Your father is still alive, right?
My father's, yeah. He was my grandfather.
Oh.
So I know he had told me that the, last I had heard, the building inspector had approved the setback on the pool, which was close to the, to the, I guess you would call it the Main Street side boundary line. And the other one was the water, whether it be city water or well water. And due to cost implications, they've decided to go with a well water option just because of the cost to get city water down Pine Grove Ave.
Oh, so you didn't, you didn't complete that in the application of what you're discussing now? There's nothing about that in your application?
I didn't see, I didn't see anything about water.
Yeah, what, can you explain, here's the plan, explain what you're talking about.
Okay.
Here you go.
Yeah, I mean, really, I think, John, correct me if I'm wrong, but the scope of our conversation really is the movement of that lot line.
Yeah.
And if you bring in bottled water, God bless you. Fair enough. As far as I'm concerned. So this, the pool here was originally going to be taken down, but then my father had spoken to the building inspector and they had gone back and forth and he had approved keeping it there because of some permitting issues.
It sounded like it was grandfathered.
Correct.
Been there for quite some time.
So that, that has been approved and then, yes, I believe that the purpose of this would be to move this, that lot line from its position where it is now back to allow for the proper setbacks.
And your father owns both of these lots?
Correct, he owns both of them and they're two separate deeded parcels.
Gotcha. But that, that line, if it was only drawn because of that pool, you didn't need to do that. It was grandfathered where it was.
So his intent here, his intent is to sell the 7 Pine Grove Ave lot.
Okay, all right.
So right now, he owns 14 Spofford and 7 Pine Grove.
Okay.
And in order to eliminate the removal of the pool and...
Or access to a third of the pool.
Correct, correct. He is proposing to shift this lot line back, sell 7 Pine Grove Ave as a separate lot.
With a little bit less land.
With a little bit less land, correct. So he can keep his pool.
Yeah, yeah, you've got, you've got more than enough to meet the zoning.
Yep.
Yeah, you got, zoning is only 15,000 square feet in this district.
Yeah.
So he's gonna, he's gonna have remaining 20,000? Right?
Yeah.
Okay. And that will leave Lot 1 with 17,000, so he's got more than ample. Okay. Anything else, any questions? John, what about you?
Well, I did go over everything with last and I did get in communication as I promised I would in the staff report and I went over that with Tilly today and a couple of emails. But bottom line is, the pool was permitted in 2006 and by state statute, if you do have a permit for the structure that has actual, actually a zoning encroachment, you only need six years for that to be in place to basically have it grandfathered, legal nonconforming because of state statute. If it didn't have a permit, after 10 years, the pool would be grandfathered as a legal nonconforming. So even though, you know, when I first looked at it, as most people would look at it and say, hey, there's a problem with the side setback for the pool, you know, you're supposed to have a side setback of 15 feet. Here you're talking about 4 feet. But because it did have a permit and it's been over six years, it's...
It's all grandfathered here.
And then there are no other lot lines being created, no new setback issues being created with this plan, it's just the addition of 3,132 square feet being added to Lot 1, which is the 14 Spofford Ave property. And then that same amount of land being taken from 7 Pine Grove Lot. Again, that lot is owned by the same party and that new lot, Lot 2, would consist of 20,334 square feet.
Which is large enough.
Yeah. So, and then the other remaining issue is that regardless of any type of structural setback problems, we as a planning board in endorsing this A and R plan, by endorsing it, we're not saying that the plan complies with zoning. And case law has been provided in this regard, Tilly has a copy of it. For A and R plans, courts prescribe that one of three notes be inscribed on a plan relative to making sure that people realize that the planning board's endorsement does not mean that the plan complies with all zoning requirements.
We're gonna write that down.
Yeah, well, the note is on the plan. And the note is, endorsement by the planning board is not a determination as to conformance with zoning regulations. So that's right in the, right above the signature block.
Where the note is on the bottom.
Gotcha.
Just, you know, just as a lesson, when, when people will do the title search when they're buying Lot 2, whoever buys that, that note should automatically be picked up by the title company that's doing the research to provide.
Thank you, John.
Yeah.
So was there any questions about that?
Nope.
If, if they in fact had come in with, you know, registered plan better than evidently they did to the building inspector, he would have found out that this is 11 feet short to our zoning side dimension. But evidently somehow he got the permit. The building inspector, had he recognized that error, he would have sent them right away to the zoning board if he, if in fact, or they would have to find another place to put that pool. You know, many people complain, you know, try to do engineer plans and all that. Well, sometimes, especially when you're selling parcels, you know, the banks are gonna be fussy about it.
Yeah.
But also, back when the pool was built, how much was really followed? How many rules and regs were they, were they being enforced?
The same ones, 1973 Arizona and Georgetown has been on the books. So it hasn't changed, the districts are...
Maybe it's been reinforcing of it now.
No, they've been, they've been enforcing things for a long time.
Yeah.
But, you know, when you own both parcels too, you know, you're not thinking in the future that you, he probably wasn't really thinking that he was gonna sell it.
No.
Pool wouldn't last that long or whatever, but here we are, 2018, and he wants to do something and now he has to make that lot line adjustment.
And I can't picture the father going into this pool.
Occasionally.
He does.
Oh, yeah, on a hot summer day, he'll jump in.
Oh, you got a hot tub? Okay.
There are two draft motions on page two. First one is the acceptance of the application, then the other one is the actual motion to approve. Board wants to consider...
Application being Form A.
Yeah.
You ready to hear a motion?
Ready.
"I move to accept the submitted Form A application for 14 Spofford Avenue and 7 Pine Grove Avenue."
Second?
Second.
Are we ready for vote? Any discussion? Heard the discussion? Ready for vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
And now, "I move to endorse the Form A application for 14 Spofford Avenue and 7 Pine Grove Avenue. Showing the town assessor's map 6D lots 19 and 24 respectively. The subject application calls for transferring parcel area equal 3,132 square feet from Lot 19 to Lot 24 as shown in the plan of record entitled 'Lot Line Adjustment Plan' at Spofford Avenue, Pine Grove Avenue in Georgetown, Massachusetts, prepared by Atlantic Engineering and Survey Consultants. 97 Tenny Street, Georgetown, Massachusetts 01833. Date for September 2018, no revision date and consisting of Sheet 1 of 1." It is a little wordy.
Yeah, but...
Second, please.
I knew Rob wasn't gonna be here, so...
All ready to vote?
Aye.
Aye. It's all set to endorse?
Yes. We could do that. Want to do that now?
Sure, yeah, sure.
Well, actually...
With the A and R plan, Tilly, the board actually, all the members do sign it?
Hmm.
No, I get a majority. You could designate...
Pretty significant. We didn't do the V I draft decision, did we?
Yeah. We pass a majority, so I'm... And the cost, these costs come out of your account, right?
Yeah, yeah.
It's kinda...
I know, it didn't work for me.
Wait a minute.
This one worked.
Did I give you the real pen?
I don't, I don't know, it looks a little different.
No, that's not the one. And you, a black pen. Where is it? Here it is.
Yeah, I think I squeezed the last life out of that pen.
I thought it was because I was a lefty. Sometimes things don't work because I'm a lefty.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's because you're sinister.
No.
Isn't that what sinister that means though?
Special.
Sinister, as I say.
Okay, you want to go over anything?
If you could just date that, today's date, which is 26...
Okay.
The deed is done. Thank you.
That's it?
Perfect, again, I apologize for the blabbering confusion at first, but...
We are here to...
We're used to that. You did pretty good, I've never seen you here before.
He called me, uh, he called me like 6 o'clock.
I know, really?
This morning or less?
Like an hour ago.
This is what you're doing?
He said, hey, I need you to run downtown.
You're a good son.
You did a great job.
Very good son, my son was like, what?
Yeah.
You need this one, this is the original?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Good night.
Hi.
Say hello to Dad.
I will, I'll call him, I'll go right up.
All right, so now, the handbook, we'll talk about that.
You don't have to mention the editorial comment, but it's a very expensive book.
It's a, it's a great, he's a good writer. I, I remember his name. I'm surprised he's still around.
He do last a long time, some more than others.
We worked on his book to do the tower bylaw and we went to a workshop and he's, he really knows his stuff.
Yeah, so this is the first new, the newest edition since 2011, so...
Oh, that's great.
Question is, do we want to purchase one of the books?
Yeah, I would say yes, but have you got it in the budget?
Well, you know what, I wanted to get the board's feel for this and, you know, and if you'd like me to move forward, I'll, I'll look and make sure we have...
I would think so, we should at least have one copy.
And, and actually, I would suggest that we get an electronic copy so that...
We have both, right?
We can do a search and that, that might be a good idea.
You can probably get both, yeah.
But the idea that, that we would be able to search on terms, we might be able to do better analysis. It's $4.59 for up to three users to access from anywhere at any time with extensive hyperlinks, which is a very powerful feature to access full text of all case law and other primary laws cited for unlimited use. And if I'm not mistaken, frequently we'll see something, but we'll really need to know what the case law is behind it. You know, what, what does it mean? So...
It's a good tool. It's a good tool, I would say.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with it, but it sounds like it's about four hundred and fifty-nine dollars worth.
I remember the tower one was like this.
Do you know what a bundle is?
Is that maybe one, one hard copy and one online?
Yeah, well, the bundle, the bundle is both. So you'd get four copies in the online.
Four copies in online. Wow.
That'd be a good deal.
Yeah. I think it'd be worth it, especially, you know, hopefully new people get on and-
And then you'll be using it for a good number of years.
A reference. Oh, yeah, he's not gonna, it took him a long time to get this far, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. He's, he's done several workshops I've attended, and was a speaker, and, yeah, he's, he's a big asset for the state.
You know what, one of the books that I uncovered today is the A and R handbook that was authored mainly by Don Schmidt.
Yeah.
So, I, I can send that, that's-
That's an old one.
Yeah, it still has the pertinent case law, though. You know, the reasons why.
Right.
And it came in handy for this evening's.
Right, yeah.
Clarifies things.
Yeah, I'd like to pick up the, yeah, the court cases that we have. You know, you have the hard copies. See, I'm, I like the paper yet. I'm not into getting on there, so I'd like to know if we can borrow it.
I can make a copy of that for everybody. It's a ninety-page document, I'll double sided.
Oh, yeah, do that, because-
It's free online.
I think it'd be, A and R is the most court cases they have is that it bylaw, and it's a state law, yeah. And so, if you don't keep up with what the judges have decided to do, you really don't know, based on reading the law, how far you can go.
Yeah, it can get totally confusing for a very, kind of a simple topic.
Yeah. And sometimes the judges will contradict each other from case to case.
No, that never happens.
So, you, you run into that too, depending on what judge, and believe me, the lawyers know which judges to go to. All right, did we cover it all, John?
We did, we did, yeah. And, you know, I'll look into seeing what money we have available and try to make sure we get, get our money's worth.
Thank you.
And it is a short agenda, because we would have had our hands full dealing with healthy farms.
Yeah.
They chose to wait and see if we can get a full membership-
Makes sense.
At our last, no, next meeting. And then we have a stormwater ad hoc committee meeting.
October the third.
Yeah, next week.
Yeah.
I'm in the process right now of trying to complete the NOI that has to be submitted between now and close of business on Monday. That's the deadline, yeah. But, you know, we have pretty much all the information we need, and so that's what I'm gonna be doing tomorrow and Monday.
Yeah.
See if I can get it done.
Is it NOI for?
It's for MS four. It's for stormwater.
Oh, that's right, okay.
That's nothing to do with us.
Yeah, it is. MS four, we have to-
Well-
It, it has to do with us in accordance with subdivisions we approve and site plans.
Gotcha.
So, any, any plans we review, a major component of them is to make sure that the drainage design, the stormwater drainage-
Right, that makes sense.
Is designed in a manner that can handle the capacity treatment and where it's going.
Yeah, it's, it's a big thing. It's, like we discussed before, MS four is a federal law, so.
It's the last of the Clean Waters Act, you know, where a lot of the pollutants that are going into our water bodies, groundwater and surface waters, you know, we, we just have to take care of that last leg. So it's being, it's being created by rooftops, parking lots, roadways, you know, it's going into these culverts, and the whole idea was to get that last chain of pollutants that are going into our wetlands-
Out of it.
Under control, and treated before they get there.
Into our water lines.
Yeah. Just the whole big effort to protect our groundwater, what we have, and surface waters.
Okay, is there anything else that?
I was wondering how we're doing with the bylaws.
The storm drain one?
No, I mean, there, there were, there've been many amendments over the years, and if I'm not mistaken, they haven't all been folded in.
Yeah. In accordance with board action of the last several months, I, I sent the letter to the board of selectmen. That was the last action of the planning board, and that was the second letter I sent in the last year on the subject matter. I had a chance to meet with the board of selectmen on the National Lab Rock on Monday, bring them up to speed with the present status of that. And at the end of that conversation, I was actually given the opportunity to talk to them about updating the zoning ordinance. I don't know if they've had a chance to see that, but I definitely got the point across, and they really understand the issue now. It's ultimately important for the town to have an updated zoning ordinance, particularly on its website, but to also have hard copies available for the public, whether they're interested residents in zoning, or attorneys and engineers. They, they really do need that document.
It's like having the Constitution written on cocktail napkins. I mean, it cannot be.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, there's a few missing puzzle pieces, and, you know, it's important to have everything codified correctly.
Right, collated and linked together.
So they understand that now, and try to get the funding available for that to happen.
Cool. But you, you think that there is a positive movement with the US?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Once we get the money in the budget.
If you get a chance to watch the, the end of my presentation on that, with the Monday night's meeting.
Right, yeah.
You might say, well, he did get his point across.
Okay, great, thank you.
It might not get into this, this year, but next year it should be, you should make a note on your computer, January budget time, put it in front of you.
Yeah, we, we do have to achieve it, you know.
And it should be shared.
It nods on the back of your neck, because you know it's not right.
Right.
It's not on the website where it's supposed to be.
Right. But it should be a shared expense, you know, everybody in the building here uses it.
It's a town government.
Yeah.
Right. Anybody who wants to put up a chicken coop needs to look at it.
Yeah, it, you know what, it's great, because people have questions all the time, you know, and they're calling up, and when you can refer them to the website, and, you know, yes, that is up to date, that is accurate, you know, this subject, all you have to do is punch it in with the word you're looking for, and there's word search, you know, section searches, you should be able, you should be able to find it, you know. And if you have any questions, please get back in touch with me.
And once, once you, we do get that, I noticed on, on the planning board's website, I couldn't find where we could key in and get it. I've been using the police department. I go in the police department, and I look on their collection of webs, what do you call it?
The documents.
Yeah, and that's where I get the general law, Mass. General Law, and, and Georgetown's law. And I could key in on that, but I didn't recognize it on the planning board website.
On the planning board, so you go into the planning board website, and then on the left-hand column, dark blue, white lettering, you'll see all the documentation. We have mind maps, and it makes reference to the zoning ordinance, the master plan, and several other documents.
I don't think the code is listed.
No, it is.
Oh, it is? All right, I'll look again.
You know, it's a zoning ordinance, right? So you click that.
Yeah.
And then all the codes come up. All the bylaws for the community. So you go down that column to one sixty-five, and that'll give you the zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
And then you go down further, three sixty-five, and that's subdivision rules and regulations. But everything's listed in there. See, that's general code.
Right.
You know, so part of this whole thing is not just the zoning ordinance, it's all of our-
All of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and, and as I explained to the board of selectmen, it's a maintenance issue. It's an annual maintenance issue that has to be taken care of by the municipality every year.
Right.
The maintenance cost for general code to update all of the zoning changes in accordance with what's passed at town meeting, you know, it's typically in the fifteen hundred dollar range, so that should be an annual cost put into the budget, and, you know, the actual task of sending all of the amendments to general code that has to be assigned to somebody.
That's right. It, it used to be the selectmen.
As a guy-
It used to be me and Hudson, you know, in particular, so, you know, you gotta, somebody's gotta do it. I, I have no problem doing it, and, and, you know, it's just, it's one of those tasks.
Yeah.
And I'll, I'll tell you, as, as a guy who developed software systems over forty years, it is so good to hear someone say, and the maintenance of it, because it's a big cost that is always there. And it's not a one-off to get it all straightened up. It's to get it all straightened up and then execute a process to keep it straightened up.
Because you don't maintain it. It's just worthless, really, after a while.
Following Tuesday, it becomes junk.
What happens is, we don't do it for, say, five or, how long? Five or seven years?
And it's such a huge task.
Then it's expensive. They're gonna, they're not gonna give you the fifteen hundred a year.
You're right, it's, it's almost that thick now of pages.
You're not saving anything, really. You're just, you know, and you're causing all this insecurity that we have the accurate bylaws there.
Right.
And, it doesn't, you know, it's gonna cost us more. In other words, we'll be lucky to get in fifteen hundred a year.
And that's the key to-
Well, the first-
Budgeting maintenance, is that it costs you a lot less if you do that.
If you keep up.
Than if you panic.
Last year I did get a cost estimate, and this was last year, and we did pass a lot of pages of amendments this year, but it was between four and five to get us up to speed, that was last year, and this year, probably another, at least another thousand.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So you're talking five to six thousand to get this thing straightened out. And then every year thereafter, it's fifteen hundred dollars. But it's like mind maps.
Right. And it's, and it's, almost all of the towns have this codebook set up.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, every-
They all use it.
Troubles to every town in Massachusetts and, you know, throughout the country. It's general code, that's what they're set up for. That's what they're in business for, is to keeping all, keeping all these zoning ordinances up to date. Bylaws.
Any other comments from our board?
The Peter Bay Gallery? No, no.
Are we ready to close up?
I move.
All right, second.
One of our earlier meetings.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.